All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending the Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Action Plan Virtual Hearing. My name is Richard Livingston. I'm the Deputy Chief of Staff and Communications Director at DHCD, and I'll be providing some brief housekeeping updates for tonight's hearing. During tonight's public hearing, attendees will be in what's called "listen-only" mode until such a time that you wish to be recognized for providing testimony and will be elevated to the role of panelist. And so if you can hear me right now and see me, that is all you need to be able to do for the time being until it's time to complete your testimony. If you have questions during the hearing, you may submit them through the Q&amp;A panel. And you can access that in two ways. If you're in what's called "full-screen view", you'll see a question mark at the bottom, and that will open the Q&amp;A panel, and you'll simply type your question into the Q&amp;A panel there. If you're in "split-screen" mode, the Q&amp;A panel is already open and is located at the lower right-hand side of your screen. The same functionality exists for the chat box, and we have staff from the agency monitoring both. So please use those accordingly. I see we already have some chats that will work to address here concerning sound. If you're experiencing technical issues, please call the number at the bottom of the screen here, 1-866-779-3239, and WebEx will provide technical assistance. You can also visit help/webex.com. At this time, I'll now turn the program over to Housing Compliance Officer Leslie Edman, who will facilitate tonight's public hearing. Leslie?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I am Leslie Edman, as Richard said, Housing Compliance Officer here at DHCD. Thank you for participating in our first-ever virtual action plan hearing. This is the action plan hearing for Fiscal Year 2021. The agenda for the evening is on the next slide. We want to clarify that this hearing is in regard to how the will spend its federal entitlement grants for the next fiscal year, which are listed on Slide 5, in which Director Donaldson will go over for you. So I'm going to hand it off to the director so that she can introduce herself and go over our action plan for 2021. Thank you.
Director, can you hear us? You're muted. If you can't... There you are.
So you didn't hear any of that. Okay. Hi, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. This is DHCD's Needs Assessment Hearing on our draft 2021 action plan. And this is a required hearing required by the funders of our federal programs, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And it is related to the seven different federal programs for which we receive funds as the housing entity and agency in the District of Columbia. And those programs... I'll give the names of the programs and the amounts. The names of the programs are the Community Development Block Grant, for which we received, that's on your screen now, $15.4 million. That, as you will hear tonight, we do use that to help support our community-based organizations providing small business technical assistance and housing counseling services. We also received from the Home Investment Partnerships funding of $5.5 million. The New Recovery Housing Program, $1.2 million. Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, Hoppla Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, $11 million. The Emergency Solutions Grant, which goes directly to Department of Human Services for Homeless Services Programs, $1.3 million. The Housing Trust Fund, $3 million, which we use to help support our development projects for families and individuals at the lowest and very lowest income levels. And then finally, the Section 108 program, where we are able to leverage our Community Development Block Grant program up to the amount of $77 million. We borrow against that and relend it in order to help support housing development projects. I wanted to address particularly that last item, the Section 108 program. We have addressed it in previous action plans, but the fact is that we have now been provided, as of February of this year, by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, a so-called line of credit, if you will, in the amount of $77,392,940, again through the Section 108 Loan Guarantee Program. The program is authorized under, yes, you guessed it, Section 108 of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, and it's the loan guarantee component of the Community Development Block Grant program. It allows jurisdictions like the district to provide low-interest financing for the development of housing for community development and for economic development projects. And the district is going to focus in this year on 108 loans to develop additional affordable housing units and to provide affordable housing residents with equitable access to community services, such as grocery stores and retail shopping, which will contribute and help lead to an equitable living throughout the district communities and neighborhoods in the district. But now back to the plan itself. The action plan is a component of our five-year consolidated plan. That's the five-year plan that we developed for HUD. These documents lay out our intended use for these resources that I just named and listed for you. And the documents that you have to prepare as a result are what is part of our application to use those entitlement resources. So the next step is to have public input into the draft plan. It's a very important part of this process. The plan has been drafted. It's posted on our website, and you can review the plan in terms of our intended use for resources. And again, that will be our application. But your voice is going to help refine what's in the plan. So that's why we ask for both testimony this evening and opportunity to give testimony this evening, and then also an opportunity to provide written comments, public comment, to be submitted to us. And we usually have been out in the neighborhoods and neighborhoods. We've used our Housing Expo as one way to get feedback and such, but due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the mayor's order regarding group meetings and such, we are doing this as a virtual hearing, and we will have a public comment period as well. But we did do an online needs assessment, and we have some of those results for you tonight, so we will be sharing those as well. I will say that based on previous citizen participation outreach, we have received feedback in several of the following areas. Green building, for one, community infrastructure and facilities, community economic development, home rehabilitation or rehabbing one's household, and homeownership, addressing vacant lighted properties, and also tapping these resources for housing development finance. The survey, actually, 328 individuals responded, and it includes also written responses as well, which will be very helpful and will shape our final report. But now is the opportunity to hear citizen feedback. I'm going to officially open the hearing at this time. If you have registered to testify, you will be asked to provide your testimony. Each speaker will have three minutes allocated for testimony, and the DHCD staff that's on the line here, Leslie Edman, Kellyanne Morrow, Clyde Edwards, will be keeping time and will give you a reminder at the one-minute mark so that we're able to hear from folks. So we're going to start today, and I'm going to turn it back over to Leslie Edman to facilitate testimony from residents. If you didn't sign up, you will have an opportunity to participate if you so desire, and Leslie will explain the details of that to you. So thank you. Thank you for being here. I very much appreciate you all taking time in this evening to give us the feedback that we want and need regarding our federal sources in the coming year. Thank you very much.
Yes. Okay, so just some housekeeping in regards to the public testimony. There is a Q&amp;A function as well as the chat function as part of this WebEx, where you can request to testify if you have other questions. We will refer those questions appropriately after the hearing to other DHCD staff if they're unrelated directly to the action plan hearing. So all participants will be muted until they wish to speak and provide testimony. Persons who request to participate and provide oral testimony will speak first, and then we will allow others who wish to testify as per stated in the chat or the Q&amp;A. So when you are unmuted, please state your name slowly, spell it out, so that it can be properly recorded. We are recording the session, and we do have a co-reporter who is going to transcribe this actual hearing. Thank you. And we also ask you, just to give us a little bit of grace while we work through delegating and assigning roles in regards to providing your testimony, so there might be a little lag as we have to work through unmuting persons that want to testify. So we did have one person who had told us in advance that they wanted to testify. We need to look to see if Ms. Nash is available to testify.
Yep, this is Richard. Ms. Nash, I'm elevating you to the role of panelist. So you have successfully been elevated. You should now be able to unmute yourself and begin providing your testimony.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not sure if I can see...
We can hear you.
Okay, excellent. Good evening, everybody. Director Donaldson, staff. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today about the action plan for how DC is going to move forward in the next year. My name is Hillary Nash McCaulay. That's H.I.L.L.A.R.Y. Nash, N-A-S-H, McCaulay, M-C-A-U-L-E-Y. A little bit of background about why I think it's so important for me to help craft what the budget is going to look like for next year. I've been a DC resident for about 15 years. I have been a real estate agent for about 16 years. I am the team lead for Core Property Group at Arla, R-L-A-H, which is real living-at-home real estate company here in DC. Arla completed $1 billion in sales in the district in Chris George's Montgomery County last year. Our group, Core Property Group, was recently named as one of Washingtonian's top teams. We are very, very interested in residents or people that wish to become residents of the District of Columbia to maintain some level of affordability. Over the years, we have watched the affordability level consistently decrease, and there's a section of residents and people that would love to own in the District of Columbia, but it is becoming almost impossible. So my partner Stephanie Cooper and I sought out last year to form this team with a mission to make sure that those individuals were heard. And since we've done that, which was almost a year ago, we've come across a number of residents who would love to be in the housing space, and we think that housing has some programs that they offer, that you guys offer, that other individuals would love to participate in, but there are several challenges. So what I'd like to talk to today is a little bit about the challenges, but not so much the challenges. What, from my opinion, are things that we can do to make the process more smooth for the individuals? I come with you saying that one of the most wildly popular programs that I think DC has implemented over the last couple of years is DC Opens Doors with DC Housing Finance Agency. I know there's been like more than a couple hundred million dollars financed through there. Realtors love the program. They can readily see and understand it. They put their clients through it. There's a transparent process that they go through that the lenders understand, and I find that that process would be very helpful with regards to the transparency if it were over here with the sale of affordable dwelling units. I'm understanding that affordable dwelling units come in different types.
Ms. Nash, I would go ahead and finish what you were going to say. We aren't so pressed for time here that we can't continue.
Thank you. I just heard the time. I was like, oh, my goodness. Sorry about that for the three minutes. But with affordable dwelling units, you have two types that we're aware of. You have the origination of them when a project starts, and then you have the resale process. Right now, I'm going to talk about the resale process because that's my most recent experience. We had a client who was one of the original owners of an ADU, but that came from NSP funds that were given several years ago. And it was a partnership with Andy Botticello, and they named the development Seventeen Solar. The seller, unfortunately, it took us almost nine and a half months to sell that unit. And what we found during that process is I don't really think that any one person in particular holds a blame so much as it is. There's not a solidified way for the seller to go about the process so that they are successful. And in this particular instance, it wound up hurting the seller financially significantly. They had to move on from the property. They wanted to sell. We asked Housing for the process to do so. We were given somewhat of a process. And in order for that to take place, it took literally nine and a half months to do so. So in this next budget, I'd like to propose that you guys partner with other real estate agencies or the real estate community to understand what the retail process looks like on the side of the actual sellers and the buyers, because these are homes, right? We're not talking about other products. You guys understand the importance of someone's home and what happens when they are in flux or in transition. There's a lot of stress. There's a lot of financial stress. And obviously, the goal of housing, when you're producing these products for constituents and residents, is that it's not a financial stress on them. You guys take great pains to make sure that they're financially qualified and that they're able to handle it. But if the agency itself is the one putting the pins on the person to not be able to move, it becomes a detriment. And while the product could be amazing, and I'm sure you sell all of them, I'm not sure that everyone is aware of the stress and how much a person or a resident really would like to not get an affordable housing unit, if possible, because they are aware of the stress and how long the process takes. So my first idea is to have some of this money go to education and to partner with the retail real estate community so that the people that are on this side, helping the actual clients, understand what the clients should be getting into, what they should look forward to, how we should set the expectations. Also, I think that there should be some funding directed towards potentially a consultant because the process on our side is very flawed, and there are some things that could be filled in the hole that wouldn't make it so that the process is unbearable for all parties involved. You know, certain forms could be made to fill out. We could have certain timelines. We know that COVID-19 has completely destroyed timelines for things this year, and I think everybody understands that. We have to have some grace moving forward. But the process itself just isn't expedited in any way. And one of the things that we found is that a different employee would have a completely different view or understanding of what the same set of sentences would actually mean. And so I don't know that that's the fault of an employee itself, more so is that they're trying to think of what the answer is because they don't have it in front of them. And so when you deal with that for different departments where six or seven different employees, from the other side, it is very confusing. I'd also like to find a way for housing to be able to ensure the transparency of the process. We find that there are many different areas that the client has no knowledge of. There's a legal process that these deeds and covenants have to go through. There's a financial process that they go through. And a lot of times, on the other side, they're only told, you know, we'll get back to you in 14 to 22 days with an answer. But there's no transparency as to what the process looks like. As an example, if you apply for a permit for something in the DCRAs system, even the new system, SCOUT, it gives you along the way where you are, what do you need to do? Do you need to contact zoning, a zoning review that has soils? It's delineated, and you can see exactly where you are in the process. And I think some sort of software or some sort of processes that can be developed to help the end user would be very beneficial to that process. Also, looking for ways that housing could provide a uniform experience for the customer, and I think that that goes back to the transparency and the process, which I was speaking about before, so that all of the expectations can be mitigated accordingly. Housing loves to partner with private developers and private individuals to produce some of these housing units. If you guys have been allotted $77 million in the coming year, I'm sure some of that would like to be spent with people that are like-minded with housing and want to develop property. But unless these processes are put in a way that people can digest them and understand them, you're going to find that you're not going to have repeat developers. Particularly the PAD program, there seems to be so much lack of understanding with the developers themselves. I'm not even talking about the housing staff. They seem to have no concept of what this process is. The ones that I've incurred, they are extremely frustrated. They have no idea what's going on. And I think that if you have a good developer and you'd like to continue relationships with them, and if you have set aside funds to educate, make the process transparent, set the expectation so people can mitigate the challenges that come with it, you will find that you will have the customer base, which are the residents or wannabe residents of the District of Columbia, running to these programs. And I think that's where I am. I think that's where I am with regards to recommendations for ideas that funds be set aside for education, transparent processes, and the ability to mitigate the expectations for these affordable dwelling units. Thank you.
Ms. Nash, thank you for your testimony. If you haven't already written out, could you please email it to us at opm questions@dc.gov so we can have that for the record? I want to remind everyone else that is here participating in the hearing, if they would like to testify as well, to just go into the chat and provide your name, and we will put you on the list to participate. So the next person that has requested to testify is Ms. Kiri. We're going to wait a moment for her to be escalated in her role of testified testimony next. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. This is Richard again. Just also a reminder for folks who are joining on the phone. Obviously, you cannot use the Q&amp;A or chat functions. And so what we intend to do is, once we're through with the list of individuals who have asked to testify through the WebEx, we'll go down the list of callers and unmute you that way. So Ms. Kiri, I've gone ahead and I cannot make you a panelist, but I can unmute you. So can you speak to make sure we can hear you?
I'm speaking now. Can you hear me?
Wonderful. We can. Please proceed.
Before I begin, actually, well, I'll introduce myself, and then if I could ask a question so that I can direct my testimony appropriately, is that something that I can do? I'd just like to ask one clarifying question.
Go ahead, please.
Well, my name is Barbara Carey. I've been a Ward 6 resident for 17 years. And I'd like to talk about that, but I'd like to be of use to you while you go through the annual plan. I do think that everything that the prior speaker, Ms. Nash McCaulay, said sounded really sensible, and I hope that there'll be an avenue for you to take some of that into consideration. But other than that, I'm just a private citizen who cares about affordable housing in the district. Is there flexibility within this annual plan for you to set funds aside for general, for things in different ways? Or is it really just you have these federal block grants, and they're only going to be spent on exactly what those block grants are for, which I know is not flexible? Or do you have additional budget that you are trying to also make decisions on?
Yes, Leslie, you only take that? Slide number five. Both funding sources are what we are working with when we're developing the action plan. Director Donaldson, did you want to add something?
Just that I was going to clarify that this particular hearing is on the use of the federal funds specifically. Some have flexibility. There's a range of activities that's allowable. The plan outlines those. But certainly, if there's another use that you wanted to suggest, we would be open to hearing that and certainly considering whether that would be able to be applicable under the HUD regulations and guidelines. So please go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Director Donaldson. I appreciate the clarification. Then my general comments are that I'm watching the character of my neighborhood change in a way that I think really impoverishes it. I've seen my working-class neighbors evaporate, and if they lose access to their housing, you know, because for one reason or another, they cannot find another place that they can afford in the neighborhood they may have been in for decades. I've got people that I consider neighbors that have been living on the same bench for as long as I've been here. And one of them recently stood up to say hello, and his knees cracked, and he said, oh, I'm getting old. He's getting old on a bench. I'm not asking you to fix that individual case. I don't know all of the ins and outs of it. But I have tried on occasion to deal with the DC Housing Authority, which I understand is different than DC Housing and Community Development, and it's been really frustrating. They've put in a lot of luxury condominiums around my older, formerly luxury condominium. And those units appear to me to be probably half-occupied. I haven't seen any of the four new condominium buildings ever appear to be fully occupied. So what I'm seeing is new housing being built that I have no idea if it's being used by overseas investors as a place to park money, and it's just unoccupied. But we aren't housing our homeless during a pandemic. We're not housing folks in Extremis. They did just complete a women's and children's housing homeless center for temporary housing down the street. This is really more of a plea for more money to be spent on affordable housing. I get in the sense that I'm preaching to the choir, so is this something that would be better directed at? I've tried writing letters to the mayor's office, my ward councilman. Is this something I should be saying to the DC Housing Authority or to HUD in general? Because I did fill out the needs assessment, and your block grants and the priorities in them, they all sound great. I'd love to see folks get these opportunities, but I'd really just like to see more. With only half the lights on in the luxury buildings around me, there's something really, really wrong with what's going on in the city. I was trying to convince my mother to move to this neighborhood, and I was trying to figure out how we could get a caregiver who could afford to live here so that they could help my mom. So there's a lot of people that can't afford to live here, and I'd love to see that improve. Should I be also saying this to DC Housing Authority or HUD or somebody?
I think that as we present the public comments and in our action plan, that will help indicate it to HUD. But of course, the more voices and the more outreach to the various housing agencies, that is helpful. Regarding homeless programs, as you know, the Department of Human Services is the lead agency on homeless programs specifically. And we can offline certainly connect you to relevant folks at that agency. Thank you for your testimony. I appreciate it very much. Thank you for your testimony. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Sorry. Any other feedback?
There's another person in the Q and A, Lorraine Stanislaus.
Stanislaus would like to testify next. And I'm sure Richard will.
You're breaking up a little bit, Leslie.
Hi, so Director, just to thank you to repeat what Leslie said when she was breaking up, was that we welcome email questions and and other items unrelated to the hearing or or further guidance in the hearing in line with the questions that were just asked by emailing opm dot questions at D C dot gov. And that email will be displayed on the screen here shortly. I think I captured Leslie's sentiments while she was breaking up. In which case, now, Ms. Stanislaus, you have been elevated to the role of panelist, and I've unmuted you, and you may begin your testimony.
Thank you all. I'm so excited about this opportunity to testify. It came just at a at a great moment in time. My name is Lorraine Stanislaus. I am a Ward eight resident, a condominium owner who lives in Congress Heights, and I'm also the treasurer for my board. Currently, I am trying to work with my council member to get legislation passed, not only in Ward eight, but within D C, where board members will be required to take training in order to become a at once you become a board member, the same way that they have to take training once they become a board member in Montgomery County. Currently in Ward eight. Currently in Ward eight, many of the condominium associations and homeowner associations are failing. A lot of that is just due to lack of knowledge of how to run an association, whether it be Read Your Financials, the Roberts Rules of Order, picking vendors, bidding for vendors. And I think a lot of that education would help us to prevent a lot of that from happening. Because currently in the ward, there are lots and lots of condominiums being built. And just speaking to some of the new condominium boards in the area, a lot of them do not know how to just run their association. So what I'm looking for is some sort of legislation to be passed requiring board members to within Montgomery County, it's 90 days, for them to be educated and for the government to pay for this, to require that they be educated on how to be board members and how to run associations or share commu- shared community living situations in D C government. So we're looking for funding and train. I'm looking for funding and training and some sort of legislation to be passed.
Thank you. That's extremely helpful. I will say that we are actually have have developed and will be introducing in this beginning of the next fiscal year in October, a training course precisely as you described, actually, for condominiums and co ops as well, because they're also facing similar challenges across the district. So thank you. Please, if you have that testimony in writing, it would be very helpful if you could send those comments along. But otherwise, we will certainly take note of your comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we on to the next participant that wants to testify. Another reminder, you can go into the chat and request to testify. Our next person is Ms. Patricia Stamper. Please stand by while we elevate you so you can enter and speak.
Ms. Stamper, you've now been unmuted to provide your testimony.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. My name is Patricia Stamper. I live in Ward seven on the commission of seven C O four. The residents of Deanwood have been experiencing a lot of flooding. I can attest to this because I assist a few neighbors with clearing out water from their basements. Also, we a lot of residents houses, a lot of residents are saying that houses are empty. And I keep seeing D C water out here. They come and they drain water out the hydrant. I would like to know what can be done to invest in the community here in Ward seven of Deanwood? What like, is there any community benefits agreements that we can enter with the federal government to get money to pay to rehabilitate our homes? There's homes that are sinking on J Street that the fact they've been condemned and the residents have to leave, but they still are responsible for the mortgage. The house that I live in, where the trees that we're planting is shifting the foundation. Yeah, I've put in requests and I've asked the city to fix the sidewalks to come. I've asked Pepco to come trim trees. My question is, what? How, as a resident and as I am a candidate for A N C Commissioner seven C O four, how can we possibly get money to help with the economic development of our neighborhood? I don't know if it's in the budget for the next year, but I just I know my myself and my residents in this board, we in A N C, we need some financial assistance. And this is a predominantly African American community. A lot of residents have lived here over 30 plus years. So I feel like they have made, we have made such an investment in this community, and we need some type of return on our investment. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Stamper. You can always go to our website, W W at D H C D dot D C dot gov. And you can see some of the investments that we've made in the different communities here in the district. We have funding sources that are dedicated to affordable housing, community development, as the director mentioned earlier. You can check in with our staff as well, and we can answer follow up questions specifically about reinvestment in certain neighborhoods based upon the investments that D H C D has in the community. And another reminder, if you would like to testify, please let us know in the chat. Otherwise, we will go next to people that are on the telephone.
Thank you, Leslie. So what I would like to do, though this is sort of challenging, I can see phone numbers based off of the first six digits. So what I'm going to do is start with the first person who called in, and I will call out the phone number, briefly unmute you should you wish to testify. And if you don't, mute you again and keep moving. In which case, the first first caller I have is the phone number beginning nine, seven, three, four, one, eight. And so phone number nine, seven, three, four, one, eight. You are unmuted if you'd wish to testify. Trying one more time for nine, seven, three, four, one, eight. You are unmuted to provide testimony if you wish. And again, there will be additional opportunities to submit written testimony. And at the end, we'll also provide a phone number to submit testimony over voicemail if for some reason there are technical difficulties associated with muting and unmuting these phone numbers. So moving on to to the phone number two, zero, two, three, two, zero. So phone number two, zero, two, three, two, zero. You are unmuted if you wish to provide testimony. Going once, going twice. Okay, last phone number. And then we have another person I see in the list who would like to test provide testimony. So the phone number beginning two, zero, two, eight, two, six. You are unmuted to provide testimony. Phone number two, zero, two, eight, two, six. Okay, so at this time, I've unmuted all phone numbers who don't have the opportunity to post in the chat or the Q and A, and nobody spoke. In which case, Leslie, I'll turn it back over to you for our next person who wants to testify.
Okay, yes. I see Ms. Meg McGuire has raised her hand. Would you like to testify, Ms. McGuire? We'll go ahead and escalate you so you can provide testimony.
It appears that Meg McGuire has disappeared. And I hope not for lack of poor facilitation on my end, but she is no longer in the event. But if she comes back into the WebEx, we can acknowledge her.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Don't see any other requests. And Ms. Stanislaus would like to testify again. Double checking to see who else.
Ms. Stanislaus, you have been elevated back to the role of panelist and can unmute yourself if you'd wish to provide additional testimony. You are currently still muted. There you are.
Okay, thank you. I did forget one important thing. I don't know how I forgot. In terms of COVID funding and COVID relief, the this the condom the condominium associations in particular, I think were left out of the conversation. And when you think about condominium communities, our funding is not that the the monthly dues from homeowners is not as important, but ours pay for things like water and trash and an abundance of trash and and water. Like we where we live, we have five buildings, 61 units, plus another two buildings to equal 84 units. And with a lot of individuals not working during this time and some who may not be working even once things get back to quote unquote normal, we were thinking that we are going to need relief in the near future. And we as condominiums were left out of that conversation. We know that we are members of the C of C A I, the Community Association Institute. And in that conversation, they only really spoke about homeowners associations and the things that individuals could do. But they know no one ever thought about the impact that COVID would have on condominium associations and all the individuals that live there. So in thinking of where you might need to put some money aside for a few months down the line, depending on what happens this fall with COVID, just hopefully you will keep condominium associations in that conversation in terms of helping to fund us, helping to relieve us. Because many of us are not nonprofit organizations. We we can file for tax exempt status. So we were not able to get those loans from S B A because we're not nonprofit organizations. We just have tax exempt status. So when the district is thinking about putting funding aside for COVID related issues in terms of housing, please keep condominium associations in mind. And that's all I ask. Thank you, Ms. Stanislaus, for your notes. We will add record. So we see that Ms. Meg McGuire is back. If she would like to testify, we can go ahead and escalate her. So I'm going to mute myself while Richard elevates her and unmutes her.
Ms. McGuire, you're unmuted. Can you?
Okay, great. Can you hear me?
We can, yes, thank you.
Oh, good, okay. I'm on for the Committee of 100 on the Federal City. And we have not submitted our written testimony, but we will. I was looking in this application for a much tighter knit of programs and of specific sites and for measurements. And I just couldn't see that. There were numbers, but there was so much general information. It was really difficult to tell how the city is planning to use monies now that we're confronting a very different landscape with the pandemic. I I felt that that the application was more of a boilerplate in some ways. And there's even information in there that pertains to past years as if they were part of this application. So it's also very difficult to tell from the application how the different programs and the significant changes that were made in the budget are knitting together to create a a really robust housing program with the federal funds and the city funds. So I I guess I was sort of disappointed in in how the report could be used to really reflect the current situation. And it's an important report. And it it has lots of good information about what these programs are and how they operate. But it seemed more like boilerplate than a real report that knits everything together. So I would like to see some kind of crosswalk with the adopted budget. And in terms of public housing, while the statement is made that this is not a troubled housing agency, I I mean, I guess to some degree that may be debatable. But certainly, the housing agency has taken a very different approach by planning to basically create 2,400 units of sort of mixed housing. And again, it it paints a picture that is kind of static and not very dynamic, when I think actually, there's a lot of dynamic going on. Certainly, the the report that that the providers who work with tenants in public housing, there were eight groups. And as you will recall, that report was submitted, I believe it was about a year ago or or maybe nine months ago. And it was very, very good and had lots of specific things in there that could be done to make public housing work much better, many things. I would I would like to see that report. How has the city really responded to the recommendations made in that report? So I will wrap up simply by saying that that I I think that this report feels a bit like it came out of a consultant. And it's it doesn't really reflect or educate very much about what is actually going to be going on in 2020 and how we're going to meet or 2021 and how we're going to meet the formidable challenges that I fear will happen in the city. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McGuire. I do want to mention that, and it's not necessarily in the, well, two things. One, the budget passed last week. And the action plan has been in draft mode and is and is going to be submitted to HUD mid-August. So there is, it would be challenging to go into all of the detail on our local funding at that point. But I know that there will be that integration and looking at it, particularly with the development finance projects that we'll be doing in the coming year. I will say also that we have done a separate amendment or separate plan of action related to the our COVID relief and recovery that was part of our how we how we informed HUD of how we were going to use the CARES Act funding and passed by the Congress. And so that does address very specifically some of the immediate needs related to COVID with some of the federal funds made available for that. So I commend that to you. That also was released for a public comment period in Kellyanne. When was that, July or June? I believe.
May.
Oh, it was in May. I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. In any event, so just to say that that also is referenced on our website. And accessing that gives you an idea of how we're spending those immediate short-term COVID-nineteen pandemic CARES Act funding in that way. But thank you for your comments. I do appreciate that. Do we have any more witnesses, Leslie?
I don't see any other person that I've requested via chat or Q and A. We could go back to the telephone lines next.
No new telephone lines that have called in.
So anyone else that would like to testify, can you please let us know via the Q and A or the chat? So we can get your testimony regarding the action plan into the record. And I do not see any other persons with their, or with requests to chat. So I think we should proceed to closing out the hearing. Director Donaldson?
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Thank you to the, the team in the Office of Program Monitoring that, that manages and, and works dearly on securing and executing appropriately our federal funding. Thank you all very much. This concludes the public hearing. I appreciate the feedback that you have provided tonight. Our common, comment period has been open since the draft action plan was released for public comment. We will continue to accept written comments electronically at opm dot questions at d c dot gov. That's on your screen right now until August tenth, 2020. We'll take these written comments plus all comments received tonight into consideration, update the plan as necessary and submit a final document to HUD on the August sixteenth, 2020 deadline. Any comments submitted after August sixteenth deadline will also be forwarded to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for participating and for expressing your viewpoints from across the district. It's, I very much appreciate it and thank you again and have a good evening.
Thank you, and this concludes the public hearing, which is being recorded and will be available at a later date. Again, thank you for your participation. As Director Donaldson mentioned, you can email us, testimony or questions at opm dot questions at d c dot gov. Or you can call us at the number that was on the previous slide as well to provide your voicemail testimony. That is two, oh, two, four, four, two, seven, two, three, nine. Or you can submit written comments to our address at eighteen hundred Martin Luther King Junior Avenue, Southeast Washington, D.C. Thank you again for your participation in the hearing. Good night.